The study. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Adams County Cultural Council Study Session Number Six, uh, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, Melvin, would you call the role, please?
Yes. When you hear your name called, please say here. Joyce Downing.
Here.
Erin Vega.
Here.
Erica Hernandez. Emily Burr. Jim Toll. Larry Dunn.
Jim, I just wanna, I just wanna say Jim is here. He is, for the record, Jim is here. His mic was muted.
Yeah.
And I also see Larry down here, too.
Mm-hmm.
Here, I'm here.
Yeah.
Susan Beta.
Here.
Harry Lang.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Uh, next we have studies, study session statements, and Dana, I will move it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we dive into business, I'd like to thank the council members for their time and commitment to the SCFD, the county, the arts, science, and cultural community. I'd also like to thank any organizations or members of the public who are joining us today for their time and dedication. It is important to remember that as an official counsel of the county, doing SCFD business, these meetings are public and anything we say today reflects on the council, the county, and SCFD. As we move into discussions, I ask that we contemplate the three core guidelines that SCFD believes are imperative in conducting a welcoming, productive, and professional meeting. Be respectful of people, of organizations, of opinions, and of time. Be positive, assume best intentions of each other and of grantees. Be present, own your experiences, participate, and engage. While this is a reminder to the council, also, it also states our values and expectations of this meeting for any visitors that are with us today. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, council.
Thanks, Dana. I appreciate it. And now I will go over, um, the study session process confirmation. All council members should have their own flux portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. All discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for will be guided by the SC, SCFD twenty twenty-four rubrics. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we'll call on any hands raised by council. Council members, please keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. There is not a scheduled break, but we will suggest one about halfway through the discussion list. And just a note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. Alrighty. So that, with that, we will, uh, start the discussion of the organizations. The first organization that we will be discussing is Control Group Productions, and they are asking for funding for two projects. So with that, I will, um, open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I can, I can pop in here.
Okay.
I think this group is so incredibly clever. Um, their, their programming is really creative and unique, and I've had the experience to sort of interact around them. And, and I just think they, they really come from a, a really powerful sort of place emotionally, and their, and their pieces tend to hit hard. I, um, in terms of their, their projects, I really love that they're taking something Adams County, the open spaces, I think is fantastic, and I liked the additional info that they provided that the this budget includes only expenses related to the creation of the project and presentation in Adams County. So again, we've asked for that in the past. It's nice that these groups have heard us and sort of done the math for us. Um, it always, it always makes me sort of breathe a sigh of relief when I see that, so I don't have to do the math myself, because I have a BFA in musical theater. Uh, math is not my strong suit. Um, and then for the, the second project, you know, this is, this is great. I think they're, they're really, they're really leaning into these diverse audiences and giving, um, I'm noticing more and more they're, they're really giving other artists outside of their sort of core company support, and I think that's a really interesting, um, way to engage, a really cool use of funds. And again, they have great additional info about, um, about their program and, and how, how they're working with those groups and all that. So I really liked it. I was curious to hear folks' thoughts on the council. I'm glad they included this information, but, um, you know, they, they have a, they had a deficit due to some medical expenses for one of their artists, which I applaud as a concept. I'm not seeing that as part of their mission statement. So, so I'd love to hear people's thoughts. I think it's fantastic that they're sort of being humans and making sure that their company is supported, but in terms of using company funds for medical procedures, I don't know. I, 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 I flip-flop on that, and my brain kind of goes, boy, I love it, but, um, but is that someone created a deficit over? But, but anyway, I'd love to hear people's thoughts.
You know, and, and I'll just jump in, you know, I, I also had some thoughts around it, um, but my feeling came with, you know, gee, what a great organization to, to kind of look at their, the people that are working there as family. You know, because I don't, you know, I don't know, but I don't believe that a lot of art or organizations have, um, insurance to cover all the artists and the different things like that. And so my reaction to that whole thing, Erin, was, you know, gee, that's really good. I mean, I'm really glad you're doing it. I know it's probably not the most, you know, you know, the policies are not in place to do some of those things, but, uh, I'm just, I, so I, I didn't struggle with it, but I mean, I, I recognized it, and that's how I felt about it was, you know, gee, this is a really good organization, and they really are taking care of their employees and the artists. So that's how I came through that.
Larry had his hand up. Oh, sorry.
Larry, I believe your hand was up.
Uh, yeah, there was just one issue that I was, uh, uh, that I took with Project One, and that is the performances were located in Adams County. There were one, two, three, four locations. But for the classes, workshops, and circle dance socials, they had one location in Adams County and others in other counties. Um, why that was included in this particular project, uh, I'm not sure. It it, uh, it indicated to me that there's, um, it, it, it weakened their outreach for me in Adams County, just for that project. I wonder why those, why those locations were listed.
Yeah. Anyone else? Susan?
I, I also, I also, um, to Erin's point, kind of reacted to the medical thing, and, um, you know, it, it is a struggle to take your organization into a deficit, even though it's a loving, supportive environment. Um, so I, I reacted to that a little bit, too. I would also say that the extra information was very helpful. I thought the, the projects were created.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Carrie is raising her hand.
Okay.
Thank you, and, um, I apologize. I am a little under the weather today, so, um, if I sound like a frog, I'm really sorry. To the, to the point that, uh, Erin brought up and, uh, Susan commented on, um, the social worker in me really took that as a a positive, especially the piece with the childcare, um, which is an area I know that a lot of like new moms that I know have struggled with trying to continue to engage in projects or work, um, because of lack of childcare and cost of childcare. Agree with the point of going into a deficit for it, but, uh, a lot of their grant, I really enjoyed reading this grant because there was a lot of, uh, mental health wo- woven into this grant, and I think that if you're saying that you're an organization that provides mental health services, that that doesn't just extend out to the population you serve, but also to your staff, and, um, to Joyce's point, I also thought about the fact that they probably don't even have healthcare, uh, associated with it, so that, uh, I, I thought it was kind of a very human thing to provide.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else?
And I'll just, Joyce, I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Okay.
Real quick, um, during the Denver council meeting, I had some questions for the organization based on use of SCFD funds. So I reached out to the ED directly, and I just wanted to share what I shared to Denver Council for clarification of use of funds, which is Control Group is deeply committed to supporting its artists, and the funds referenced were used to provide additional paid time off and to hire staff to cover those on leave. The funding was not used to pay any procedures, something that could be misinterpreted from the grant language.
Amazing, amazing.
Yeah, that's really good. Yeah. That is great. And just, just one, just to follow up with Larry, I, I had some of the same concerns you also did about the, uh, the benefits at, at Adams County, so I just thought I'd throw that in. So. All right, anyone else?
Jim, Jim had his hand up.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna say, when it came to the whole health issue, I, I sort of marked that as something to discuss in September for us. Because this is a great project, these are great people, but we also then make it a score based on, quote, financial, and that impacts to some extent, or, you know, financial. And this is not the, the time or the place, but I do want to make a note that I think we should be talking about. When you get cases like that, where there are these factors that put them in the red or give them a code red from SCFD, how do we want to think about that in our scoring? Because that's where, that's where I made my decision. And, and, uh, that's wonderful, but there are consequences to that, and there's a, there's a score on the financial. So, um, that's all.
Okay, thanks for your input, Jim. And Melvin, can you just add that? You know, for Zoe to, um, add to the retreat agenda? For discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Jim, uh, it's Dana again. Jim, um, oh, Erin, go ahead. Your hand's up first.
Sure. Um, thanks. I just wanted to thank the council for that discussion, because I think it's a really, I think it's a really good one, and, and again, I want to reiterate, I, what I took away from the grant was that this is an incredible investment in their people, um, especially given the kind of work that they do, which is very, Larry sometimes brings up the Baroque ensembles, um, immersive dance pieces that are devised. That's also a very special set of skills. They have a, they have a certain special set of skills. Uh, so I, I can, I can, again, I empathize. I think it's an amazing human act, and, and thanks for everybody for discussing it. All right, Dan, thanks. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Uh, just, this is just kind of a general statement, I think for the benefit of Jim, um, and maybe some other council members that kind of wonder how we do the, the red, green, yellow. Um, again, we base those colors on objective information, and in this case, it was because of their cash reserves. And just so we're clear, when we do, um, their cash reserves, we're looking at what they have in their, in their their liquid account or their liquid funds at the end of their fiscal year. So it means that the next day, if they had a blowout gala, and they had, and they raise a hundred thousand, that could shift, and so I, I, when we provide this, it's just a basis, a basis, and you really need to, to take a deep dive into those financials. And if there's any questions, please reach out to me, because I don't want you to base your financial score solely based on what SCFD provides you, red, yellow, or green. It needs to be looked at in totality, so I'm willing to help you um, if you have some questions as to if it would affect your score.
Okay.
If that's helpful to the, then that's for all the council. I'm here to help.
Thanks, Dana. Yeah, thanks. You know, but it's worth a, a conversation later on, just, you know, to bring it up again. You know, just to make sure everybody understands, so, okay. Anyone else? All right. The next organization is Family Theater, and they are requesting funding for two projects. And with that, I will open up the discussion.
Well, I, I can start us off. I, I thought that, um, the grant was very well-written. I was impressed by the new DEIA um, plan that they've implemented, and, um, the diversity of the financial support. Oh, sorry, my computer's not happy.
That's okay.
Okay, anyway, the diversity of the financial support was impressive to me, too. So, well done, family.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I see hands? Let's see. Erin?
Um, they mentioned something, I mean, first of all, their diversified contributor list, well done. We say that every week, those groups that have found a way to diversify their contributors is, that, that's very hard to do, so congratulations. There was something that really stuck out in Project One, and I, I thought it was worth bringing up. Uh, not free but accessible, right? So what does accessible mean, also knowing that these organizations? My guess is in the next three and a half years, um, funding will become increasingly difficult, um, through corporate sponsorships and sort of federal funds that are trickling down. And they, they mentioned a really interesting thing. Sorry, that was my, that was my door alarm, um, I'm just trying to get into the building. They offer very discounted, a certain number of discounted inclusive hospitality tickets. They offer fifty percent off rush tickets. So this idea that things can't necessarily always be free um, is something that I think they're really embracing, and I, I want to applaud them for it. I also want to say that, a big thank you to them for their expense category, um, in their other, their other expenses, um, uh, breakdown. I really appreciated it.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Anyone else? I'm not sure if I see any other hands.
Gary has her hand up.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to share that I really enjoyed reading about Project One, um, that they are are, um, employing a, an actor with ADHD to play a character with ADHD. Um, again, the, the social worker in me just really appreciates what this organization is doing and how they are representing different disabilities and, um, I, I very much enjoyed reading, um, the projects that they're working on.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I'll just, um, add a little bit for me. I always enjoy reading the Family Theater grants and the things that they do, and, uh, and I love the colla- collaborations of the different organizations, some of them you haven't heard of before that they reach out to, uh, just due to the type of programming that they do, you know, so I re- I really enjoy that a lot. And then, you know, I did note also what you did, Erin, about the, uh, the different perfor- uh, performances and the tickets, and I thought that was pretty interesting, how they worded that, so. Uh, overall, I, I really enjoy reading, uh, actually both of them, both, both the grants that they submitted. Anyone else? Seeing none. I will move on the agenda to Colorado Conservatory of Dance, and they are also requesting funding for two projects. And with that, I will open up the discussion. So maybe I'll start with this one. Um, again, I really enjoyed um, reading, you know, what the, uh, projects were and what they were, uh, requesting what funding, funding for. Um, but I did have a question in Project Two, uh, you know, and maybe others, uh, can kind of chime in, but I just felt that uh, there was multiple distinctive requests in, you know, in this one project in number two. So, um, actually, maybe in both of them. But they had an umbrella under the names such as perform, performance series, but then they kind of divided out, and I, and I could see more than one project in each one of these, so.
And Joyce, I, with Project Two, I made the note that at least they were all packaged under education.
Well,
so I, so I at least understood how they packaged them. Some, some discussions we've had, um, people can check the tape. I go, wait, I don't understand. Sorry, Larry, I think you may have raised your hand before I started talking. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Um, uh, I had a question. Um, it's with regard to their, um, with their, uh, um, I'm sorry, in, in regard to their fundraising. Uh, now, they had a, they had a fundraising, uh, link on their, uh, website, and, uh, it said they have to raise a hundred and fifty million, or I'm sorry, a hundred fifty thousand by the end of July. Is that? I, I, I take it that's separate and apart from any money raised from, uh, SCFD. Is that right?
That is, I'll answer that question. That is correct.
So now that you brought that up, Larry, and I hope I didn't jump into anybody, but I, I had a note to myself to ask Dana during this meeting. S- in the financials, it says something about, uh, SEF, something about independent auditing, uh, firm questioned the ability for them to possibly continue. And I, was that their independent auditor, or did SCFD, um?
That is a direct quote from the audit that's
Okay, all right.
ran application.
Thank you, thank you. I just didn't, yeah, I, I went, I needed to ask, ask that question.
Joyce, I'll pop in here. I did have a question on Project One, just in terms of attendance, um, anticipated in attendance, um, they're anticip- and maybe somebody can help me with this. Um, again, math is not my strong suit. They anticipate serving over forty-four hundred attendees through its performance series. I'm seeing their I'm seeing their venues, and I've, I'm looking at the, if they're performing once per venue, I'm like, that's around fifteen hundred people. But I guess they're doing, i- are, am I reading this correctly? Should we assume that they're doing more than one performance per venue, I guess? Because they're saying Nutcracker, Nutcracker alone brings in three thousand people, so I think I just answered my own question.
I, I actually stopped and tried to do the math, too, because that seems like a whole lot of people to attend dance. So, um, for the Nutcracker, I'm sure that makes a big difference for them.
Because this is saying, audience two hundred and two hundred and fifty for one performance. We estimate four hundred attendees for two performances with the color of symphony. We expect a hundred fifty to two hundred attendees for one performance for the Young Orchestra, Young Artist Orchestra, and three hundred attendees for one performance. But they're not telling us how many performances they're going to do, so again, assuming, assuming best intent, um, I would love in the future a little more clarity on that. It almost feels like it's so much information that I can't, I can't do the math.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move to the next uh, organization is Think Three Sixty, and they are actually, uh, asking funding for one project, and with that, I'll open up the discussion.
Hey, I could kick this one off, Joyce.
Okay, all right.
Uh, uh, this sort of blew me away. Um, I didn't know a lot about the organization. I've heard their name a bunch, but, um, the way that they bring artists into schools, the amount of partnerships, just sort of their sheer size and scope, it feels like since, what, they founded in nineteen sixty-three, I'm like, this legacy organization seems to be everywhere and really filling a massive gap in our arts curriculum for, for kiddos. Um, it looks like across the state. Um, I am surprised that they have fairly low or no corporate support and fairly low individual giving. Because, boy, oh, boy, I think I might. If I knew about a capital, if I knew about a campaign coming from them, uh, I know I might support. And the, the project itself, I think, is, um, fantastic dual-language format, school staff sharing in the program, so I think it, I, I really, I really enjoyed this grant, and I was excited to learn more about this group.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, and to, to your point, as far as the staff, I, I did flag that for myself, saying that, you know, they really heavily support the, uh, educators, you know, and I really like that idea from preschool on through them. So that was good.
I thought it was impressive that they, uh, they earned an EDIA award um, for their work in that area. I did have a question on Project One. Um, when I Googled it, the Pearl Mac Anything, Anything Library is actually in Denver County. Is that correct? Did anybody else see that, or did I?
Hmm.
All Anythings are part of the Adams County library system.
Okay.
As far as I know, but Melvin, do you have any thoughts on that?
Just the address that was provided popped up in Denver.
I do not.
Sometimes, sometimes. Denver addresses pop up as Adam County because it's unincorporated Adams. So it's, it's not Denver County, it's Adams County, but they'll have a Denver address.
Okay, when I Googled the county though, it said Denver, but I, I probably missed that, thanks for clarifying.
I, I don't know, that's just kind of what I was thinking, Carrie. Trust your gut.
Which one was it, Carrie?
The Pearl Mac. The seven, six, one, one Hilltop Circle. And again, my computer might have just pulled something up wrong.
I had that same note, Carrie, too, so. You know, I understand why you think that. I don't know in terms of multiple project thing, but you know, you have teachers and libraries and kids in schools and, you know, I don't, I don't know. Given what they do, they probably do similar things in all those places, but I was. When it comes to impact on Adams County, I know that the assumption, I could make a million assumptions, but. In the grant, it might have been nice for me to actually have an, an example of the things that they do. We teach kids drawing, we teach kids theater, we teach kids pottery class, I don't know, you know, just some, some. Fewer concrete examples that I could really understand what the teachers were going in the school to do.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else?
I just looked it up. That's definitely Adams County, for sure.
That's what I, it says Cheryl Wood here, so which is Adam.
Yeah, it's definitely, I, yeah, I don't live too far from there. I know it's Adams County, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to Google and listen to everybody at the same time here, you know, so. Because I think Adams County boundaries are right around Seventy Second Street, if I remember that correctly. But I could be off, but I, that's what I believe. All right, anyone else? And thanks for bringing up the, the award. I was going to mention that and I think that's really a great thing to note. All right, anyone else? With that, we will move to the Four Mile Historic Park and they are requesting funding for one project. Oh, wait a minute, let's see, is it, did I do that right? Yeah, I did. Okay. All right.
Sorry, I'm just looking, I'm getting a very different answer about that, about that library. I apologize. That it's in Denver County. But anyway, something to think about.
Yeah, cause this.
God bless the internet.
Your internet's different than my internet. All right, thanks, Erin. Okay, before I move on, is there any other comments or questions about them? All right, so we will go ahead and move to the Four Mile. Historic Park and I'll open up discussions. And they're asking just financing or funding for one project also.
Um, I have, I just had a note and I'm not finding it in the grant because my fingers aren't working, but. It was a nice description of their evaluation, how they do like pre-visit work and post-visit work. And I thought it was great that they've added all these indigenous partnership projects and things like that, so. It would be helpful to know just what schools you were thinking of working with specifically, might be too soon.
I thought they had a pretty good outreach into Adams County. Looking back over some of our previous evaluations. It stands the, the organization. That is in a fixed location, which, you know, people have to come to. The organization that did the most to attract. People from surrounding counties was. It was Bluff Lake Nature Center. I noticed in their. In their notes and in their application that they had significant. Personal outreach into some of the other counties. So when I looked at this organization, Four Mile Historic Park, I noticed they did similar things and. And I was appreciative of that. To me, Bluff Lake Nature Center, I know their, their past, we've done them, but they're the standard for. Fixed location groups that, that have to attract people. To their location, so I appreciated their outreach.
Alright, thanks, Larry. Anyone else? Erin?
Yeah, I, again, attendance. Looking at their. Last year, so in, in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Four Mile served six hundred and nineteen students, hundred and seventy, hundred and seven chaperones. Two hundred and forty students and thirty-seven adults, but that's from Title One, so if I'm doing my math correctly. Six nineteen plus a hundred and seven, of which there's a subset of those. And then they had outreach which were into Adams County, which was ninety-six participants. So they had eight hundred and twenty-two Adams County folks either go to the park or engage in their educational programming. But they're anticipating twenty-five hundred. This year, so the difference between eight hundred and twenty-two and twenty-five hundred. Just as somebody who has tried to get butts in seats before, is a huge lift. So I would love a little clarity on. How they're gonna get that massive, what I would consider a very large percentage increase of Adams County folks. And either through their, their field trips or into their space, so. Especially when their marketing and PR expenses is zero for the project, so just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, you know, just to add on to that a little bit, when I was reading through all of it, what I picked up and I could be. Really wrong about this, but. What I picked up about it was even though that they were projecting that number, but then in the narratives and the way they were explaining it. That that was a combination of onsite and outreach. So that's how I picked it up, you know.
But their onsite and outreach last year was eight hundred and change.
Oh, I know, I know, but that's what they're, yeah. So that, but that was just how I read it, so. Okay, anyone else? So I, I just want to add a little bit, I really did enjoy reading about the new collaboration and the free events that they were doing. You know, with the indigenous culture and doing a lot of the different dances, the traditional dances. And actually that they had joined the Colorado Inclusive Economy and I actually looked it up. Cause I hadn't personally not heard of that. And I thought in, in the explanation, it kind of explained. How it helped them in their hiring practices and things like that, but I did. Check into that a little bit and I thought that was a really a good move on their part to collaborate with them, so. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we will move to Boulder Philharmonic Orchestra. And they are requesting funding for one project. Open up the discussion. I, I guess maybe I'll just start this, you know, I was just, when I was reading, you know, I, I enjoyed reading the, the. The grant, but what stood out to me, and I have to thank the organization. For the detailed information about how the project benefits Adams County, I really enjoyed reading that, so.
Pardon me, are we doing Boulder Philharmonic now?
We are, we are.
Thank you. I just got to catch up a little bit here.
Absolutely. Any, anyone else? Want to add to my? Hearing none?
I can just say that I think that they had a nice explanation of their programs and. I, I'm not sure if they anticipated or that they hope, hope for outcomes. Goes in the evaluation section, but it, it was nice to see like some really thoughtful thinking about what. Outcomes is, you know, as a result of the programming would be, and I think that maybe segues into what you're saying too. Joyce, about the benefits to Adams County, so I thought it was a nice explanation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, and I was doing my, was doing my attendance math, I don't know why, this, this week I just hyper fix it on attended stuff. And I did have questions, I was like, okay, they're asking for seven thousand more than Jefferson for less programming. And I was sort of looking through and not knowing a lot about. Lot about the other, the other counties and how, how, cause I know their rules are different, all that sort of stuff, and then I did notice they mentioned they're doing two, two. Visits for each site, so, so it's not actually less programming. So I really appreciate them offering those little tidbits, because we are, we are looking, at least I, I shouldn't speak for other folks, but I am looking at. Impact for Adams County and. And that was one of them, and how much money are you asking for Adams versus other counties with similar programming? Alright.
Thanks, Erin. Anyone else?
Yes. I, I was especially. I especially admired their, their EDIA. Work and the statement that stood out for me was to increase the representation of its board. Governments, governance. A skills matrix to identify skill gaps. And facilitate board diversity rather than the focus on personal connections of current members, so. It was. It was not. It's not who you know, it's what you know, and I thought. Especially in EDIA work, that was a good, strong position.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't see any other hands. So we will move on the agenda to the Boulder Ballet and they are requesting funding for one project. Open up the discussion.
I could kick this one off, if that's okay with you, Joyce. Thought it was a, a well-written application, I sort of understood where the organization was coming from and. I, I love that they're started in seventies, again, we had a few organizations this, this, this time that have been around for a really long time and that's. Amazing, I love that, I love seeing that kind of stability within an arts market, that's awesome. And their growth, this, their growth this year really staggered me, sixty-four percent increase in company dancer salaries. That's amazing and going back to our conversation earlier with. With, with the, with another organization. You know, see, seeing how folks can really uplift their, their specialty talent. You know, how do you retain talent and how do you fundraise to, to match that? And the fact that they didn't sort of tank things to, to do that was really impressive. Then the four hundred percent increase in individual giving since twenty nineteen, what a great stat, that, that was just a really amazing stat. And as far as the program, yeah. I think not being able to dance super well myself, I can and I have, but you know, it's not my strong suit. I will say though, it does, I do believe that, I believe this, this statement that. Integrating dance, dance with academics and social emotional learning, offering an expressive outlet that fosters artistic and personal growth. I think that's great, let kids move a little bit and they'll probably retain information more, so that's great, and I appreciated the additional budget info.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Larry, did I see your hand or no?
Uh, no, but I. I, I, this just did occur to me, I loved the statement of the, of the seventh grade kid who said. I didn't know I could dance. I thought that was, I thought that was a pretty good indicator of, of what they're doing there and I, I enjoyed that.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'll just add a little bit here, because I have, I guess more of a question slash comment. And I totally agree with everything that you, everyone has said. But when I was looking in the twenty twenty-four activities report, it said there was one event at Pinnacle. School for six thousand people, and I think that's probably a typo. I had been over there and I don't think it holds six thousand folks at one time, so I just thought I'd. Bring that up, you know, I, it's probably more of a typo than anything, but then when you look at. The entire activity sheet, it, it, they actually took that number and then. Added it up with the rest and it all came to over seven thousand and some, and I went, this just doesn't feel. They didn't notice that, I'm sure, you know, so. Alright, that's what I have.
Madam Chair. Um, in the final grant report, it says that they serve six hundred and twenty Adams County residents.
Okay, so.
At that, but that could be at their facility as well, so it's. The difference between the grant application, the final grant report, the grant application says. How many people at the site where the activity happens? The final grant report reports on where people say they live. So if they sell tickets and, and the performance is in Boulder and they sell tickets, those. Those people that live, or those residents that live in Adams County will show up as Adams County in the final grant report. Did I confuse everybody?
Maybe.
We're just looking at two sets of data, the, the.
Probably, yeah, you know.
Report is how many actual residents say they live in Adams County.
Yeah, yeah, but when I was looking at the report and I don't have it up right now, so I can't confirm what I read, but. It said Pinnacle, it's, it actually pointed at the school, so that's why I brought it up, that's all, you know, now. I'd have to reread it again, but that's what I saw.
And the information that I gave you helps corroborate what you were thinking.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, anyone else? I don't see any other hands. Alrighties, we will move to. Museo, Museo de las Americas. And they are asking for funding for one project. I'll open up the discussion.
This is. This is a, I don't know. Aaron, this is a roses and thorns one. In, there was just the one project, right? This goes to outreach again. And I noticed that in their, in their project. In their, in their project uh. Request. For Adams County. They listed. The venues as. And I quote. Various Adams County schools and community locations. Traveling exhibitions will be held at various Adams County locations. Not good enough.
Right.
Uh, then then they they first further state that. The organization claims these strong partnerships with Adam County Schools. It seems to me that they would have by now made some specific plans. With any of the schools. Uh, that with which they have a partnership. To uh to uh have their programs put on there. Um, same thing uh with the anything libraries. But once again, there are no. Specific plans and. You know. That's a huge part of the organization. I mean, that's a huge part of the application to me. They anticipate fifteen thousand attendees. Well, it would be good to know where.
I think that was typo because I looked that up and last year they had one thousand five hundred fifty, so that was just a typo. It's not fifteen thousand, I think it's fifteen hundred.
Susan, what are you referring to? I'm sorry, I didn't see that in my notes, I.
It says anticipated attendees, so Larry, I saw that too. It says anticipated attendees fifteen thousand.
Right.
It's not, it's gotta be fifteen hundred, so that would that would.
Oh.
Yeah, because their attendance last year was fourteen seventy-six and and that included twelve hundred people who went to the county fair.
Right, right.
Yeah, but still, okay, fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred, there there is a big difference, but. There's no, there's no indication of. Of how or where they're gonna bring these people in.
Right, I I thought it was an extremely large ask, kind of covering everything or serving Adams County. I mean, it it seems to be a very large ask, in my opinion.
Yeah. You know, and I I'll have to say that I flagged the same issues you did, Larry. I, you know, I'm I'm going, where are the exhibits going to be held? You know, when are they going to be held? You know, what schools, you know, if they are confirmed, I mean, and they may already. Have everything scheduled, but we need to know that. You know, you have to identify by that on your grant for us also, so that and actually, that's a real big thing for me, too. As well as the libraries, same thing, you know, anything, you know, has libraries in every city, you know, and unincorporated. So are they going to Commerce City? Are they going to Brighton? Are they going? Where Thornton? I mean, we don't know.
I think possibly some of that could be passive. Um, attendance where. Um, there. Especially when you start having exhibits and people just passing by um versus active engagement.
That's true, but still, we'd like to know, you know, are they going to hold it over at the gallery in Northland? Or are they going over to Thornton, you know, to their little? Area, I mean, I'd like to know that.
Jim had Jim had his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to take us a couple swings at this dead horse. It it just to me seems. That it should not be that difficult to give us a list of the schools and libraries. I mean, this is. Most of the other applications do that, uh, they have that they've. And if you're planning, this type of planning, I think needs is probably being done that for in advance. And I really don't see it as any sort of burden. To give us a list of, these are the schools where we're gonna do this. And list those schools, list the libraries, is this an exhibit? Is this a workshop? It would. Give far more credibility to their impact on the county.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll take a I'll take a swing at the horse. Uh, Rosen Thorns, so I I did really appreciate, I think, I think it's an important group doing important work, so I want to state that, first of all, this is. What what I'm and what I'm gleaning from from other. Folks on this council is is just clarity. It would be great to have. To have more in concrete information um so that we can make um decisions. I do appreciate the information about them adding steam education to their workshops. Um, I think that's fantastic. And, you know, their exhibits bringing in Afro-Mexican journey, Yanga slavery and freedom, so I think. In terms of EDIA and what a group that is very focused on sort of Chicano art and, you know, Chicano culture, I think that's that's um, it's really fantastic. And. Their their contributed income was off by four hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents between their contributors. And and I know we're gonna talk about this and Dana's already rolling her eyes at me. She's not really, for for she's not really rolling her eyes, but. Their list of contributors is eight hundred and eighty thousand and change. Their contributed revenue in their financial overview is one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so. And and yeah, so so that kind of disparity, I feel like warrants an explanation, so. I'm sure that there is an answer to why we are. Four hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents off, um, but I would love to know why. And I'm gonna get on my Joyce soapbox for a second. Um, their project is for exhibits and exhibit programs. Education programs. And traveling programs, which to me is three very distinct and separate. Requests. We do offer two project grants, so um they could have easily put this into at least two, but if it if. Again, I know we talked about this in a previous session, but this really does feel like. This really does does feel like three very distinct. Programs. I'm not sure how they're packaging them.
Yeah, it's it's just called uh exhibition and education programming, that's it, you know, so.
Well, I know how they're literally packed, yeah, I know. But some groups do make an argument that, you know, hey, this is our theater season, we're doing it at the same theater, it's got a theme. You know, I I could sort of wrap my head around that for this, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. And and that might just be me, so.
It may be because we just don't know where it's being held. You know, I mean, it all is full circle. So. Anyone else? All right, I don't see any other hands, so we will move. To environmental learning for kids. And they are requesting funding for one project. So I will go ahead and open up the discussion.
There was uh. One school in there. That uh. Uh, in the, in the, uh, in the, in the county request, they listed a school that's in Brimfield. So, um. I don't know if they made. A Brimfield request. No, I don't see that they've made a Brimfield request. But um Prospect Ridge Academy. Uh, is in Brimfield. Now, I don't know if that's. Well, I don't know if it's part of, you know, the Adams County schools as as at least one or two Brimfield schools are. From the days when Brimfield was in three different counties, but um. I. You know. I guess I would kick that out.
Kick out the Brimfield school. Yeah. Yeah, cuz I I noted that it had nine venues, but only eight were in Adams. Um, also, but I'm I'm one wondering and and I I think I mentioned this before. In that particular part of the grant. Application when they're asking for, you know, the venues and, you know, where they're gonna be doing all of their different programming. In other grants, I have seen. Uh, listings of. Of venues that were not in Adams County, but they, you know, and they weren't really asking for funding for those. But since the request is, you know, where are you gonna have all the programming? I'm wondering. If somehow or another uh our organizations are just putting everything. You know, in that list that they're going to be performing if they're asking for funding for it or not. Does that make sense?
It does accept, um, I'm looking at the Arapaho application right now and they're listing. Arapaho locations that are on the Adams County, so it just looks, I think not everybody realizes that Brimfield is its own city and county.
Okay.
It's only been twenty years. I have to throw this in. I was, I met with the mayor of Brumfield, the whole other thing. And according to the mayor, they have five different school districts in. This county of Brumfield, they're served by five different school districts. Uh, and then we got into a discussion of. Why they didn't create their own and and all the hassle behind that, but. I just, I'll pass up long as a note of interest. There are five school districts in Brumfield County, according to the mayor.
Oh, that is interesting and probably very confusing for. Everyone also, yeah.
Uh, it's confusing for the folks in Brumfield, too.
Yeah, I would imagine, I would imagine. All right, any other comments, questions?
I thought this grant was extremely well-written and they were very clear with statistics about all the different things and their DEI is very strong, so. Um, we've had conversation before about how sometimes the scientific. Uh, organizations. Really nailed, you know, organization of the ground, making it easy to read. Statistics and I I found that helpful in reading and deciding.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll pop in, um. There was one section I literally wrote, wow, um. When it talks about elk's impact is clear in both data and lived experiences, to Susan's point, maybe the science organizations, um. They just have more experience sort of creating narrative out of clear numbers, um. Hundred percent high school graduation rate for year round. For year-round participants, seven thousand plus youth and families engaged annually, sixty-five percent alumni pursue STEM careers. Their volunteer participation tripled. I I I mean, it's just. And then, of course, the 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 groups that they work with, the um. That face systemic barriers to education after access, I I I can't. Yeah, this is, I, to me, this is a wonderful organization doing wonderful work, and I'm glad they're doing um Adams County work. Um, and I thought their budget. Was a modest ask of their total. I thought that what they were asking for from Adam, from Adams County was actually. You know, fairly appropriate, so.
Yeah. I totally agree with what you were saying. I actually flagged that also about a hundred percent graduation. I went, oh, my goodness, you know. What a, what a wonderful thing to be able to say, you know, it's great. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands. I will say that we are now well past the half mark. Does anyone want to take a break before we move on or we want to move on? I am good either way. We're good. Okay, we'll continue on. Okay, next is Historic Denver, the Molly Brown House. And they are asking for funding for one project, so with that. Enough the discussion. Do it, Carrie, did I see your hand or no?
Yeah, sorry, um, one thing I really enjoyed in reading this grant, um. Was that it it read like they weren't just. Doing things the way they've always been done, and for an organization that's been around as long as them, I could see how that would be an easy thing to fall into. But they really do appear to be reevaluating. Um. What they're doing and how they're doing it and how times have changed and how it might impact things differently, um. Based on current political and social climate, so I really appreciated that um. About the grant, uh, that they they really demonstrated ways in which they are taking. A fresh look at what they do and and adjusting as necessary. Um. The, the. The thing that I was kind of struggling to understand is, um, kind of similar to another grant, the. Location was also vague. Um, I wasn't. Very sure about where their outreach is going to. Also, um, the three hundred, three thousand and five hundred curiosity-driven student adult learners from Adam County. I I wasn't sure if that meant they were going to them or the the um attendees were curious and coming to the. Museum. I was a little confused by that uh wording.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Well, I I I will add, I mean. This is a a wonderful, if you will, organization and their whole thing is. My experience with them has been very positive. I commend them, but yes. They, uh. It's they say schools, libraries, uh, fairs and senior centers across the county. And an organization uh like Historic Denver here again should be able to give us a list of those schools. Um, and say, these are the, the schools, libraries, uh. I assume the county fair, uh, but they shouldn't be relying on my assumption. Uh, and then I have one other. I will say thorn to what I I really. I'd like the the Historic Denver, I like what they're doing with this particular institution and how they do it. And Dana can jump me for going way off the reservation. But in this day and age. When Oregon, when. History is being rewritten and rewritten inappropriately. I just have to say, I think uh these good folks. Need to recognize that Margaret Brown was never called Molly during her lifetime by anyone who knew her. And the Maggie Brown House, if the Department of Defense can change ports. Uh, to recognize historical accuracy. I think it's time they give some thought to changing Molly to Maggie with all due respect to uh Debbie Reynolds and whatever. And if I'm off the reservation, I apologize, but. I just felt. Given the state of history today and the need for accuracy. I had to say it.
Jim, we thank you for your opinion. However, can we please stick to the grant? And you are more than welcome to um email the organization or send them a letter as a private citizen stating your. Your opinion, but this is not the the forum to do those kind of comments.
So. Thanks, you know, but I I have to say, you know, um. Well, let let's move on with that, but you know, I do appreciate. The fact that Jim actually read the grant and he noted possibly the. Inaccuracies and I, you know, I support our console to making. Comments, you know, you know, and their feelings, so I just want to let you know that, you know, that that I do support that. But but as another, as a rose and really, I am really historically minded, um. Because I actually am involved with this historic uh commission, you know, so I really enjoy reading things that they do. And I love the idea that they assisted the Far East Center to be added, their site to be added to the state register. And I'm glad that they mentioned that. I'm I just thought that was really cool to do that, um, so I just wanted to bring that up. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, Joyce, I'll pop in here. The, I I really liked this piece in the narrative about how. The, uh, I really liked this piece in the narrative about how they're to, to Carrie's point about how they're. Maybe looking things in different ways, specifically this, um. Um, Blackmore sculpture, which I might be pronouncing incorrectly, but I've seen them before antique stores and they definitely. Make you feel, I think they make most modern folks feel uncomfortable, these little sculptures. Um, of quote unquote black servitude, which is what they, they wrote. And I, I really liked that they. Scholar led round tables, they've relaunched the exhibit specifically to create thought provoking discussions surrounding it. And I, 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 I really enjoyed that aspect of it. Again, to Carrie's point, we can't, and to Jim's. You can't rewrite history, um, so, so put it, put it out there for, or maybe you can, Jim, maybe you can, um, sorry. I shouldn't, I shouldn't dig that back up. Um, but I, I do have a question about their activities. According to their detailed activities, Adams County makes up two percent of attendance and one percent of programming. And I know that's for things outside of the museum. Um, but in their narrative, they say Adams County represents seventeen percent of our. Education outreach audience. So I'm just curious about that discrepancy that I'm sort of seeing, um. You know, two percent of attendance versus seventeen percent is, is kind of a, a big deal, but I, and so. I only bring that up to second Jim's thoughts from a couple of weeks ago. When we meet again in September or whenever we meet for our retreat to bring up a way to potentially get some clarification. I know other counties do that, um. Yeah, I, I just feel like this could be answered and be nice to get a little clarification on that because that's a big discrepancy.
Yeah.
Potential discrepancy.
Anyone else? So I would, I would just like to add a little bit about, um, and I. Really applaud the organization for relaunching this whole, you know, exhibit. Because they really pulled it back for a year or so, you know, to relook at it and try to figure out the, the best way to present it to the public. And I just want to applaud the organization for doing exactly that and bringing it back. So, yeah. All right, anyone else? Hearing none. We are at the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art. And they have, uh, two projects for funding. That I'll open up the, uh, discussion.
This is just a little thing, but it caught my eye. The grant remount request. Let me ask, was the grant remount, grant amount request reduced by fifty cents to reach compliance?
Yeah, yeah, it's over our, our cap.
Just a nice difference. Okay, just checking.
Yeah, and I think. Another county, it was like fifty cents also that they, they had to be adjusted by.
Having said that, they have a wonderful, uh, uh, they have a strong outreach into Adams County, which I thought was, uh. Uh, quite significant.
Anyone else?
I have a comment, um. I appreciated reading, you know, about the, uh, the outreach into Adams County, but. I guess I just want to know what they do, you know, what do they actually do with the kids like. Not contemporary art, you know, can be a struggle for adults, but maybe kids respond to it much more effectively, but. You know, like, what are you talking about? Are you, you know, are they doing? Projects, do they get their hands dirty? You know, I, I think it would warm up the ground a little bit to put in a sentence or two about what you actually do. With the schools. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Well, you know, in, in for me, when I was reading through some of it and I can't remember what. Part of it, but anyway, they did talk about free education programs and a variety from K through twelve. But they were re, weekly art classes that they went into the classes for at risk youth. And so I, even though they're not. Maybe expanding on the, the explanation as much as they should, there, there was a little piece in there about that.
Yeah, their, their contemporary classroom is the, uh, is, is the, uh. Uh, vehicle, I guess that they're using, which they describe as a free day of art education and activities. At a school with materials and curriculum provided by the, uh, by the museum, um. So there is something there, but, uh, as a matter of fact, uh. The narrative links to, uh, to a webpage. That discusses it in a couple of paragraphs, but, um, it, it's still kind of general.
Mm hmm. Yeah, yeah, you have to dig for it for sure. You know, and I just want to also say again, thank you, you know, they actually reached out to Bennett. And they're going to both schools, middle school and high school. Um, so thank you very much for taking your program out there. So. Anyone else? Yes, Erin.
Yeah, project two, um. So first of all, the attendance sheet is a mess and I think that's a formatting issue. We brought Dana, this came up, uh, the, the week you were. You were absent, um. From what I understand, um, for folks listening who are writing these grants, trust. The way that S C F T is giving it to you, please do not try to do anything clever to make it look correct on your end. Because then it looks very strange on our end, um. So I don't know how to, how to fix that, but, but the tenant, she was kind of a mess and I, I really do rely on that just for context of what they've done before. Um, but I'm noticing locations and I put that in quote, that are just zip codes. Is that common? Dana, where a location is just a zip code, there's no other information?
No, I mean, we, we really need to know those counties. I mean, you know, if you think about Aurora, is it in Adams or is it in Arapaho? So.
Well, they, they are giving us counties, but they're not giving us locations on some of the stuff on their attendance tracker. So, um. Again, assuming best intent, I'm sure that the location was in Adams County, but boy, oh, boy, would I like to know. Where they went, um, but project two. Um. I, I want people to ask for what projects need, um, so I want to be clear about that, but. I'm looking at a hundred and twenty grand for. To hang art exhibits is the way I'm sort of looking at it. Because I'm not seeing anything about the artists getting paid for their work, which is totally great if that's some of what they're using the funds for. Does the museum buy the artwork from these exhibits? Um. I'm just not seeing a hundred and twenty thousand dollar. We have lots of other groups that hang exhibits all over Adams County and, and I'm not. I'm not understanding where they're coming from this to, to getting to this hundred and twenty K number, um. They also mentioned six exhibitions with complimentary programs. So maybe the, maybe the money goes to these complimentary programs. But I don't know what the complimentary programs are for, for project two. So. Again, I would really strongly suggest to, to folks. Give us information, um, maybe have somebody not associated with the project, take a look at the grant before, before you send it off. Because they might, it might raise some flags, some questions, um, that folks like us who aren't necessarily intimately involved with the organization might have. So. Um, project two, I just wish I had a lot more clarity in addition to everything that everybody else has said.
Um, Erin, uh, real quick, because I just pulled up the activities in attendance sheet. If you click on. You have to download it first and then you have to click on the, the, the different, um, fields. Then you will be able to see the entire address. So the addresses are there, um, it's just the, I, I don't know. It's just formatting somehow. It doesn't appear, it just looks like a zip code, but it's there if you click on the actuals.
Great, that, that's wonderful to know. Thank you. I assumed it was something like that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you for that clarification because I wondered also, and I've never really, I mean, I. I look at it, but I've never really gone in and clicked on any of the particular. You know, like the, the zip code area or whatever, because, and I had some questions about that. So thank you for that explanation. All right, is there anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a question. Erin, where are you seeing a hundred and twenty thousand? Um, because it's. The total expenses are a hundred and forty-three, six ninety-nine. So where, where are you getting that number for hanging the art? I didn't see that.
Uh, it is, so administratively, just in terms of their expenses, the, the adminis, the people, right? What they're spending money on for people. So administrative and logistics salary and wages, professional contract services. That to me is the people that are putting up the exhibits, either organizing the exhibits or putting them up. Uh, it was, I was a little hyperbolic, so thank you, Susan, for calling me out on that. But they're spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars ish on people. For exhibits and, and also. You know, the, the, um, complimentary programming, but I don't know what that is. So. It's, they're spending a lot of money on people to hang art.
I've been involved with hanging art and if you get professionals, it is expensive, but, um, I think. There's, there would be room for more explanation, I would agree.
Mm hmm. Yes, thank you, Susan and Erin. All right, anyone else? I don't see any other hands. All right. We will move on the agenda to. Where are we? Series Fest and they are asking for one project funding. With that, I'll open up the discussion. I'm sorry, I just kind of laughed at myself. I had, and I'll, I'll just share this with you guys. Um, I had put a note down here going, I really thought this was a really interesting read and then I. I went, I want to take the class. So, um, but I, I really did think it was very interesting and, and the different. Education aspects of, of filmmaking and, and just everything that goes along with that particular type of career. Is, uh. Very interesting, uh, to read and I bet the students, I mean, it would be different than the traditional type classes. You know, that they would have to take, so.
Yeah, I would say I'm not familiar with this organization and I, my notes is cool. So different from, from a lot of other things that we fund. So I thought it was easy to read, read and well put together. So thank you for bringing just some, you know, special things to Adams County.
I just had one question. I wasn't sure if anybody else found the answer to this. Uh, it looks like they're going to one high school and there are sixty-six students they're serving. I'm curious to know how the students are chosen, um, if there's like an application process or if they just register for it like a class. Um, because it's a very specific number. So my guess is that there's a cap. So just, just curious how that decision is being made.
Hmm. So. In, in all I have on my notes is I wrote down twenty-two students and those students. Attend fif- thirteen to fifteen sessions. Now, I'm not sure. Yeah, that's what I have here.
But they're holding three sessions per. So that's where they're getting that sixty-six. So they're doing three separate sessions, but to Carrie's point, that's interesting. I hadn't thought about that. How? How do they choose those twenty-two kids or how do those twenty-two kids get involved?
Yeah. Yeah, unless they just sign up like they do any extracurricular, you know, and then when it's filled up, it's filled up. But would be really interesting to know, I, I think. Good catch, Carrie. Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. One, I really applaud them, especially with Sundance Film Festival coming to the area. Um. Film. Film creation has always been sort of a thorn in the side of Denver. We, I know historically we had the opportunity to. Do some stuff thirty years ago and New Mexico grabbed that and, because we didn't want it. And now New Mexico has a very thriving film industry and we're trying to catch up. Um, so organizations like this that are providing opportunities leading up to, for our local filmmakers, I think is fantastic and our aspiring filmmakers. Um. I, I, I didn't see an answer to the question as to why there was a deficit in twenty twenty-four. Did anybody else see, they? They.
Oh.
They sort of talked about what they're going to do, but I'm not seeing anything on why.
You know, and I, I kind of flagged that also, but what I wrote down was, and I, and this is my opinion. It looked like, um, we got that flag because there was inaccurate reporting. Uh, from the organization to S C F D. Dana, you can answer that, but that's kind of what I interpreted when I read all that. My apologies, uh, restate the question, Joyce. Um, there. You know, there was not an, uh, to air and I won't. Suppose to, anyway, what I think Erin was saying was, you know, what is the explanation behind the deficit? You know, in the, and.
Yeah, uh, just to be more specific, they, they offer, there's an opportunity, right, for them to answer the questions. If your organization had a deficit and I'm seeing a hundred and sixty-four thousand and change deficit. Why? Because there are often explanations, a grant was given one year, not the other, blah, 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 um. But they, they give a lot of answers on what they're doing to sort of improve. But they don't answer the question of why? Why? What was the issue? So I, I'd love, I'd love a little more clarity, just as a little, uh, note to the organization. I'd love a little bit more clarity with stuff like that. Just so we could, we could know. And I dug into contributor lists and all sorts of stuff, but Joyce, that might be slightly different than what you're saying, which was.
Yeah, I'm looking at the financial piece that S C F D, uh, gives us and there was something in there about that.
Well, I think they have, um, such a great diversity of funding and a hundred and fifty-four thousand's a lot. So. Um, I agree with you, Erin. That was something that I kind of glossed over, but you're right.
So, Erin, I think, I think Erin was spot on. I don't really see a lot of, um, in-depth information about the deficit and it looks like the deficit. Is between the final grant report and the actual grant application are different. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so. It's very objective, black and white, just nothing there. Okay, okay. Yeah, I must have been looking at the different, a different part of that whole thing, so. Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll move on then to Urban Farm. And, uh, they are requesting funding for one project. So can I, can I go back? I'm sorry, can I go back when I'm, because I think I had. Never mind, never mind. I'll just forget that whole thing. All right, I'm sorry. Uh, let's move on to Urban Farm. And they are requesting funding for one project. And with that, I will open up the discussion.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I know you can't see me, but, uh. Uh, 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 at any rate, I, I thought this is a wonderful organization that provides. Uh. An invaluable service by teaching, especially kids, but. Teaching people how. To. Grow their own food. How to raise animals, all these things that, you know. Uh, most of us don't see all of the services that most of us don't see. Uh, but, uh, but keeps our bellies full. Um. So I thought this was, this is a great. Teaching organization and, uh, and they are teaching, uh, invaluable lessons.
Thanks. Thanks, Larry. Anyone else?
Um, I, I just, and maybe I'm just confused, but I, I kind of um, would have liked to know the government support that they rely on. There, there's a mention of a government contract for four hundred and fifty thousand, but they actually have eight hundred and near, nearly eight hundred and fifty thousand. And I, I was just curious only because um, I have a feeling if you're relying on a lot of government, you're gonna have some problems coming up and I was just curious about that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at their contributors list.
Okay.
Um, see if there might be an answer to that, but um, yeah, the, the, the project in the group really excite me. Um, uh, did they apply last year? Did I, am I?
I think so.
Okay. Some reason I read it with fresh eyes, uh, this year. Um, and it just makes.
Sorry to cut you off. They missed a deadline, so that we did not get a grant from them last year.
Last year, right. Um, uh, as a kid who grew up in farm country, whose grandfather farmed, whose uncle farmed, whose cousin currently farms, um, this is really fantastic. I just want to echo what Larry said. Um, the stat that really jumped out to me was the vocational skills program. Um, I think this is incredible. I mean, engages with Denver's most at refuse. Ninety-four percent of the participants have been charged with a misdemeanor and or felony charges and ninety-six percent are from BIPOC communities. I, I, giving these, giving these kids a chance, these youth, a, a chance to get out, work with their hands, learn this. I mean, this is a trade, this is a skill um, that, that we are rapidly losing and, and I feel like not every kiddo fits the mold and sometimes that's why they're acting out and um, I'd love to learn more about, you know, I, I just want to learn more about the organization. I think it's great. Um, and I am curious about the securing a childcare license, which will allow the organization to apply to become a Medicaid provider. Carrie's, Carrie's nodding her head. I'm, I, I'm curious about that and how that applies to. Yeah, that is just so interesting. It feels like they might be moving toward, I think it's Bluff Lake, where they actually have a school, uh, an outdoor school, which is really exciting if that's the way they're going. I will say their contributed revenue is off by more than five hundred thousand. Um, I don't understand it, so I know we'll talk about it in September or whatever, maybe add a spot for people to, but that, I just get confused when people's numbers are that far off. Yeah.
So Erin, you know, I, I actually looked at that, but also I thought it was pretty interesting about the childcare and I uh, did a little research on it and what it, if they get this childcare, if I'm reading this correctly, uh, then they can expand the programming to uh, a community that um, helps disability individuals, people that have disabilities, otherwise they can't do it. Now, that's how I read it and interpreted it, you know, but uh, and maybe Carrie can add to my explanation, like, because I'm, I just did a little research on it, you know, so.
Yeah, Medicaid is uh, very, very challenging to work with, so I applaud them for taking on that feat. Um, I actually haven't heard of programming like this covered by Medicaid, so my guess is that it's, if they're working with the IDD, which is the Intellectual Disability uh, Community, my guess is that they're doing so as either a um, like a residential treatment kind of supplement program or something that provides um, either like a work program or some kind of treatment program that would then be covered under Medicaid, but don't know for sure because I have never, I would love to have a program like this to refer my patients to. This is, this is incredible and I really applaud them for taking on that feat because that's uh, that's, it's pretty cool.
It is, you know, thank you, both of you for bringing that up. Erin, were you done with?
I have one more thing. I just wanted to applaud them. Um, they, they snuck in this little thing. Stuff increased its traveling farm program by thirty-three percent in twenty twenty-four. Um, and they're, again, talking about um, impact on county residents. The fact that they are doubling down on this, um, Larry's brought this up before. It's sometimes hard for organizations that have a fixed location. Um, and they're really, they must be seeing success with the traveling program, teaching, um, teaching all sorts of great stuff that they list and they provide the outline of what they're teaching and all of that, which I wish I had had this in my school and I grew up in a rural community. Uh, I mean, I had four, four H, four H was great, um, but um, anyway, it's just, I, I applaud them for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, just a couple of things that I, I noted and even though, you know, my mistake that we didn't fund them or they didn't apply last year, but even though they weren't funded by Adams County, they had a hundred and forty-two occurrences last year in different events and things that they did bring to Adams County. So, you know, even though they weren't funded, they did, you know, they uh, did do that. But I have a question. I'm a little concerned. Um, I did notice that uh, they're not going to be receiving funding from Denver. Uh, in Arapahoe County, there's kind of an adjustment as well as what uh, I believe that we're gonna have a, it's over the cap for Adams County too. So I'm just a little concerned about if they can provide everything that they're interested in providing within the request for, in this, for this project.
I can explain um, Denver, which is Denver's guideline says that the majority of their activities must occur in Denver County and they fell below that fifty-one percent threshold, so that therefore, according to Denver's um, guidelines, they're not eligible to apply for funding.
Right, right, but, but, and I guess, uh, you know, but my concern is, I mean, that's a substantial amount of money. You know, so would that impact our programming in any way? I, I was just, you know, something that I'm looking at. As well as Arapahoe County, they had an adjustment on there. They were over the cap, I believe, also, as well as in Adams.
Well, how can they fobble a fifty-one percent if their loc- their farm is in Denver? I, I'm not going to get into the weeds on that, but I, that feels like an oversight. Um, yeah.
Yeah. That's what they reported on their activities and attendance sheet, so that's, that's on the organization to report.
Totally, as I said, I'm not in on the weeds on that, but.
Yes, right, right. Again, black and white, nothing, nothing personal, just subjective information.
And that's all we can do, you know, so, right. Alright, any other comments? Seeing no hands, we will move to Friends of Dinosaur Ridge. And they are asking for funding for one project, so we'll open up the discussion.
Well, I, I could start. Um, I thought this was a, a clear, easy to understand, writ- well-written grant, nice breakdown of exclam- of statistics and expenses for Adams County. Um, the one thing I think, having been a grant writer for a long time, is that um, I think they're taking it for granted that we all understand the impact of going to see dinosaur tracks. It would be nice to have a little, um, you know, just two sentences maybe about kids are overwhelmed with, you know, because of the way we tell the story or, or whatever, just some kind of, something like that, because um, yeah, you know, having, I, I had an experience where I was there with kids and they're like, whatever. I mean, it's, you know, in the teaching environment, I'm sure it's much more effective, so. Um, yeah, that's just neither here nor there, but um, I thought it was a nice grant overall, but just, just some food for thought for next time.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else?
Yeah, I, oh, sorry, sorry Joyce, go ahead.
I wasn't gonna say anything. I was just looking.
Um, I, I, I really enjoyed their examples of improvements to their systems based on their tracking and evaluation. And we don't see a ton of that in these grants of how they've actually changed things based on their evaluations. And I thought that was really awesome because it shows that they're not just paying lip surface to it, that they're actually listening and responding, which was great. Um, there, the, the project itself, I, I got a little, I got a little in the weeds here or tried to get a little in the weeds here and I was just infused. It just, they, they throw out a lot of numbers. Which I, I know they're trying to be clear for us, which is great. Um, but I'm seeing a lot of assumptions and approximations. Um, and they, they actually write it quite, quite a few times, assuming, 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 approximating. So it just, all that, all that does for me is just sort of, it's not that I'm skeptical, it's just um, it would be nice to see some, some actual numbers on there. And the way they're, in, I would love a little clarity on the way they're getting to certain numbers. Um, they've got their administrative logistical support and incidental expenses adds up to approximately this number for tours of these groups. You've got, assuming that twenty percent of our mission effort and energy, and I just go, this, this feels, this, this feels difficult for me to follow, so. Um, I would love a little more just kind of clear, concise language when it comes to how they're coming up with their number.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I uh, thought that uh, uh, especially between this year and last year, that they um, that this organization really bumped up its uh, uh, and improved its outreach game. Um, they um, they talk about their uh, anticipated attendees and once again, fixed location, they have to bring people in. Uh, but they were very, they were very careful about keeping tabs and keeping track of those who came from Adams County last year. Their uh, their, their numbers last year from Adams County are similar uh, to what they anticipate this year. And um, if you go out to their website, they have an Adams County link that lists approximately fifteen, sixteen schools that uh, that came as a group and uh, and visited Dinosaur Ridge, so. Uh, they were very careful about keeping track of that and it made me, you know, realize that their, their anticipated numbers are uh, are, you know, they, they made sense because of the way they uh, the way they kept track of those numbers. So uh, kudos to them for their Adams County outreach.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else? Erin, did I see your hand? Or, no, do just.
Just scratching my head.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright. With that, we'll move to New Dance Theater, which is Cleo Parker Robinson. And they are requesting funding for two projects. I will open up the discussion. And I don't see any hands, so I'll just jump in for a minute. Of course, I love to read this um, this uh, organization's grants and when, you know, when they uh, send them to us. I'm, they have done so much for so many years, another one of the organizations with a lot of longevity uh, in, in the performing arts and what they do. They started from grassroots, now they're internationally known. Uh, so um, I, I just, I just really appreciate, appreciate, you know, what they have done, you know, in, in moving into the current time. Uh, I did have a question though. Um, in project two, I, I was kind of feeling that I was seeing two projects in one request. So um, I do like what they have to offer, you know, in both venues, but it just seemed to me, felt to me like it was two in one.
In what way, Joyce?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, you know, but of course I don't, but um, uh, the, the one venue was over at the Studio School and the other, they had something at Anything Library in, in Brighton. And so it was just kind of like, it just felt like two projects, you know, separated. It wasn't a continuous thing, it was at a different time. So I just kind of felt that way.
Yeah, it's interesting. I saw it as workshops in Adams as opposed to performances, so that, that's how I sort of saw it packaged. I, it's interesting. I didn't have the same response to it, but I totally get, get how you, how you did. Um, but I just saw it as, you know, the week-long artist and, artist and residence program. Um, as opposed to them performing, which was project one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I did have a question about how they're getting their nu- boy, attendees. Why did my brain just hyper-fixate on attendance this week? Um, they're anticipating attendees for project two, sixteen hundred? Um, I, I mean, I, I've seen a lot of other applications for Anything Libraries and uh, uh, those programs do not tend to get thousands of attendees. Um, so I'm just curious, unless it includes assemblies, which maybe it does, but I'd love a little information of how they're, a little more clarity on how they're getting to that sixteen hundred attendee number with two venues.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joyce, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just agreeing with you. Yeah, so.
Um, yeah, project one, I, I think it's great. I mean, thanks for coming to the Parsons Theater. I think having Afrocentric dance in Adams County is amazing, so thank you.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, one thing I wanted to interject, that I really like the idea that they're having some new programming going on and they are promoting uh, health issues in the arts, which I think that's something to really take a look at. Yeah, I, I thank you for doing that. Anyone else? And seeing no other hands, I will um, move to our final grant. Sue Teatro. They are asking for funding for two projects. With that, I'll open up the discussion.
I couldn't get to their website. It was uh, uh, there was an issue uh, online and I think I could, uh, I mean, of course, I read through the narrative, but uh, the website brings things to life for me in a lot of ways. So uh, it was disappointing. I mean, of course, it isn't their fault, but uh, uh, somebody needs to look into that uh, into that connection issue. I don't know if anyone else had that, but maybe it's me.
Yes, listing is not secure right now. I just went through something similar to this with an organization that I help out with and uh, yeah, so there might be a little SSL or SLL uh, work that needs to be done. And uh, yeah, so there might be a little SSL or S L L uh, work that needs to be done on the, on the backend, so.
My internet might just not be discerning, because I have, I have no problem getting into it. Which is concerning.
Don't tell the Russians, don't tell the Russians.
Tell us your secret. Anyone else?
I'm on, on, oh, sorry, go ahead Carrie.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say insecure uh, internet connection, that's all.
Oh, okay. Erin?
Um, I will say, I, I, if I'm reading it correctly, they didn't do any programming in Adams County last year. Um, just looking at their attendance and activity sheet. Um, so thank you, thank you so much for bringing programming to Adams County. I think this is awesome. Sue Teatro has a, again, another wonderful legacy organization in the metro area. And thank you for bringing this programming to, to Adams County. I think it, it looks really interesting in the way they're working with the kids, the six community outreach workshops. I sort of, I, I was not sort of, I feel like by reading this, I had a clear understanding of what they were doing, what they were trying to achieve, and I really appreciated that. Maybe that's because I'm a theater kid. So the script readings and all that sort of stuff, maybe I just, I get it, but I really, I really enjoyed that. And, and the fact in project two, that they're gonna be working with these Chicano Studies, they're bringing Chicano Studies classes into schools. Again, man, where was this when I was a kid? Um, would have, would have been awesome, so um, and, and the workshops that they're also bringing in. So thank you so much to them for bringing uh, programming into the, into the school, into Adams County. Um, I will just say, I'm gonna drop it in there, three hundred thirty thousand difference in their incomes. So just, there's a, that, when, when it starts getting into the hundreds of thousands difference um, in, in their detailed contributors versus their financial overview, contributed revenue. Just brings a, brings a question to mind, that's all. I'm sure there's an answer, I just wish I knew what it was.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, um, and I'll just, before I close the discussions, I'll say ditto. You know, I think this is a, a good organization. I really enjoyed reading uh, the grant and, and the request. Um, and what jumped out at me is they are really um, pursuing and, and getting larger. They just actually uh, purchased a second building to put some of their programming in and have actually put some earnest money for a third one. So I'm really interested to see what they're gonna be doing with all this and how they're gonna move forward. It's really an exciting time, I think, for them. So um, that's all I have with that, other than thank you very much for bringing the program, grant, programming into Adams this year. So with that, we have completed our ninety-one grants for this session. Thank you, thank you Consul so much for all the work you've done. I don't know if anybody heard my numbers earlier when I was talking about it, but there's a lot of hours that went into reading these grants, so thank you so much Consul for doing that. And I do wanna also thank all the organizations that actually applied for granting in Adams County. And thank you for uh, wanting to come in and bring programming into this area. So with that, I'm gonna open it up. What is Consul? Anybody have anything?
You said it all. Thank you so much for applying for Adams County and making our community stronger and more educated and more cultured. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, when do we, I, I have that we have to submit on May nineteenth, everything, is that, is that it?
Let me look at my calendar and I'll tell you what we need here. We have to, uh, that's for the ratings to be in by eight o'clock in the morning.
Oh.
Yes. Am I correct Dana? But I'm, I'm pretty sure.
I'm trying to find it super quick here, um.
But I think it's Monday that we have to have those in, so.
If we're meeting next week to do the allocation, which I don't remember, I don't. I apologize, I have three counties and I, the dates are just running together.
You are forgiven. Let me look at my calendar real quick, I can pull it up.
Well, you can send an email to everybody to remind us.
So the nineteenth I have is ratings are due by eight o'clock in the morning. And then um, on the fifth, the allocation meeting, so June fifth, we will have an allocation meeting.